I'd like to introduce Amanda Stein and Keith Harbison from Aflac.
Okay, um, so, um, I guess we can start off with, uh, do you guys know anything about Aflac? Or, you know, how it works and that sort of thing? Have anybody ever had it? Um, so you know that then, you know, they make the medical, well, it's going to pay doctors and hospitals, um, you know, whatever bills you may incur. Uh, but this money, you know, it's based on those same things, but it comes to you, the owner of the policy. Um, so, you know, like I told you before, we work with a lot of boroughs, townships, things like that. Um, you know, and everybody's setup is different. Um, we know that you offer major medical and vision, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, but this is just some extra stuff that you can offer them. Um, you know, some places want to pay for it there for their employees. Um, and others don't. And either way, it, it works the same way. It can be payroll deducted if it's, you know, employee based. Um, or, you know, if you want to pay a percentage, then we can set that up as well. Um, I know we had also talked about, um, deducting pre-tax. And you guys currently do not do that, right?
No.
Okay. Um, so yeah, it's, you know, it's a form we fill out for the IRS for any of our accounts. Um, so that even the major medical that your, is that employer paid? Or is, is a portion of that paid by?
It's all employer paid.
Okay. Um, and the vision as well?
Yes.
Okay. But, uh, you know, any money that's used for healthcare costs can be deducted prior to taxing, which obviously then lowers how much it pays tax.
As long as we pay it, they can't deduct it.
What's that?
As long as we pay, they cannot deduct it. The employees can't deduct it.
The employees can't deduct it, correct. Um, but I believe that you could still see some savings on it. There aren't a lot of places that pay for healthcare these days, so I don't run into a lot of accounts that do. Um, but with anything extra, anything that's payroll deducted, they see a savings and then, you know, and then you see a savings as well. Um, we also now do a lot of, um, I guess, the value-added services. So, you know, if, if we're allowed to see your employees, if you offer the benefits that we offer, um, we can give you things for free that Aflac just pays for. Um, one of them that I think would probably be a good fit for you guys is seventy-five hundred dollars worth of accidental death and dismemberment. You know, you guys are out doing things, physical things, um, so, you know, bad things happen. And you, you don't have any sort of, um, life insurance now, correct?
Right.
Okay. So Aflac will pay for it for up to, for, for a full year. Um, after that, it doesn't just roll over on its own. You don't just start getting charged for it. If they want to keep it, they can keep it. If they don't, they don't have to. Um, you know, they're, it's sort of on a watch and see basis. They may pay for it the second year too. Um, but as of right now, I can promise you a year for free. Um, and that's just, you know, they're, they're adding a lot of things like that just because, you know, there are lots of insurance companies out there and you can choose anyone. Um, we want to be able to give you something extra. Um, but as far as you guys go, I mean, do you guys have questions? Um, you know, I know we've talked to Kristy quite a bit, but...
I really don't.
No, I, yeah, I know the healthcare insurance is really a pain in the neck for everybody.
Right.
Now, we fought it last year and we changed it. And it seems to be working.
Okay.
And I'm sure it's going to change before the year's out.
Yeah, that seems to be the trend now.
Yeah, I don't know.
One of the nice things too about Aflac is that there's a stability built into it that, uh, once we quote the price and they purchase the policy, then that's where it stays. You know, in order for them to bump the price up, then they would have to rewrite the whole state at that point. And so, now, I don't have a lot of experience in Aflac, but I have a friend who's done this for twenty-seven years. And she says she's never seen a price hike in those twenty-seven years.
I can't believe that.
Well, a price hike on, on what you've already purchased.
Oh.
The prices of the policies do change from year to year depending on, you know, the upgrades they make or, you know, different things that they cover. Um, but after you purchase it, your policy stays the same forever unless you change it. So if you pick it up and it costs you four dollars a week, it's going to cost you four dollars a week forever unless you ask us to upgrade it for you. Um, so that's what he's, yeah, that's what he's talking about. The prices have gone up in forty years for sure.
I just spent a half hour on the phone with my auto insurance company last night.
I bet that was fun.
I still bleed.
Hmm. But, um, but yeah, I mean, you know, we do things like accident insurance, short-term disability. There's nothing in place for that right now, right? Short-term disability policies. Okay. Um, you know, that's the one that's, that'll pay a portion of their wages if they get hurt off the job or if they're too sick to come into work. Our accident insurance, insurance pays both on and off the job. So you have coverage twenty-four hours a day. Doesn't matter where you're at or what you're doing. Um...
Vision insurance?
We do have, we do have vision. I know you already offer it, um, but, you know, we could look at your rates and see if we can do any better. Um, and what your coverage looks like compared to what our coverage looks like. Um, there's dental, life, you know. Cancer insurance is really popular. That's actually what we were founded on. Um, and I can say from experience, my, my family, everybody gets cancer in my family. So I've unfortunately watched a lot of my family members use that one in particular. But like my dad, my dad worked for Aflac my entire life. He started when I was three. Cancer policy was the only thing we sold at that point. Um, so he bought a cancer policy. Uh, he never used it until I was in my mid twenties. Um, he had prostate cancer. He was in the hospital for three days, I think, but he did have like eight to ten weeks where he was, um, you know, recuperating. Um, but he had never changed the policy. So the policy was twenty years old by the time he used it. Um, and they sent him a check for twenty-six thousand dollars, you know. And at that time, I mean, twenty-six thousand was a lot more than it is now. You know, that was fifteen years ago or whatever. Um, but, you know, he said, "We wouldn't have starved without it," but it makes, it makes your life easier, you know, especially when you're fighting something that...
Yeah.
That, you know, that's hard. It's hard. Um, and it's just one, one less thing on your plate, I guess, or, you know, ease your mind so you don't, you know, you don't have to get back right away if you can't. Um, but, I mean, I guess, I guess that's it for what...
Short, long-term disability policy. Something that definitely I've been being interested in, you guys?
The only thing we offer with paper that is the, uh, workman's comp, right? That's all.
Yeah. And workman's comp, if they get hurt on the job, workman's comp is who they'll be filing with. But the short-term disability, you know...
Short-term disability, no.
Yeah, and if it, that way, if they get hurt off the job or if they get too sick to come into work, that, it does the exact same thing as, as workman's comp, but it's just, you know, paying you for what workman's comp won't cover you for.
Yeah.
You understand that we got to carry, we carry a policy on the fire department too.
Oh, do you?
Oh, you have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I suppose that makes sense.
You have to carry workman's comp for the fire department.
Yeah.
And that gets a little bit expensive.
I bet it does.
But it's cheap protection.
Right.
And that's a volunteer fire department.
Now, do you have like a group plan in the long and short-term disabilities or is it...
The, the short-term disability, I mean, everything we do is semi-individual. The person themselves is, they are the owner of the policy. But, um, you know, our, our three-month and six-month coverage are guaranteed issued. So even if you have somebody that maybe has a past history of things that would knock them out of the running or, you know, they have pre-existing conditions or something like that, they're still going to let them get the policy, which, and, and with short-term, you can't, you can't walk in off the street and just purchase it for yourself. You can only get it if an employer offers it to you. Um, so, you know, they don't, they don't do like a group rating because it's different for everybody. Depending on age, depending on how much they make per year, and depending on, you know, how long they want to be covered for and how quickly they want to be covered. You know, there are all these choices. Now, a lot of places that, that cover their employees, like if, if you foot the bill for short-term disability, then you get to pit those specifications and make everybody's the same. You know, but if it's, if it's based on the employee picking it up themselves, then they can choose those and kind of make it fit whatever budget they see fit. There are so many different questions that, um, we can sort of get it within a price range, whatever that price range may be. Um, it just moves the coverage around a little bit.
In other words, if we offer it to the employees as a choice and they got to pay for it, then they get to choose their coverage.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and I have had places that, um, the, what is it? The township of Mars, the borough of Mars, they pay for their, for their guy's short-term disability there. But when I went in, because I didn't originally open the account, when I went in, we found that they all had different coverage. They were all paid different amounts. They, you know, and, and some of these guys made considerably more than others. The township was paying for it, but they had never set a plan in place to make sure that everybody's coverage was based on it sort of being fair for everyone. So some people had great coverage and they were paying three times as much for theirs as they were for this other guy who makes the same amount, but his coverage is terrible. You know? Um, so, I mean, again, that would be, that would be up to you, I guess.
I would definitely like to look into the...
Yeah, well, to get some, get some information. We can, you know, give us something we can really look it over.
Sure. Oh, and we did, we did bring you packages here.
I mean, I'd like to talk to the guys.
Yeah.
They would be interested in it.
Sure. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Um, do you want me to just quickly kind of run through what everything covers? So it's, it's in your package here. That way you have a little bit more information. Okay, so the accident policy is the first one on the left-hand side there, the brown one. Um, so this one, like I said, it covers on and off the job. It's twenty-four hours a day coverage. So like in my case, I broke my foot just walking out my front door. It covered me. I also broke a tooth three days later chomping down on a, one of those lifesaver mints. Cracked it all the way through and they had to pull it. It also covers for that. So like even, even, you know, very big things or very small things, it covers for literally anything, cause and effect. As long as it's not a sickness, they'll count it. Um, the only requirement is that they go get checked out within seventy-two hours. Um, they just want record of that initial accident so they know then that something happened to you and we should be watching for follow-ups.
Don't you have to have a file an accident report also?
You, you do. You fill out a form. Um, and you can either do it by paper or we have online services now that you can go in and upload all your stuff on the computer. If you're signed up for direct deposit and they get all the information they need, we guarantee to have the money in your bank account within twenty-four hours. Um, so it's, it's the fastest of any, you know, supplemental insurance company out there as of right now anyway. Um, but the minimum you're going to get for going to see somebody, now this can be your family doctor, it could be a chiropractor if you pull your back out. It could be a dentist if you crack a tooth like I did. Um, the minimum you're going to get is a hundred and twenty dollars. If they have to do an x-ray, it's one fifty-five. Um, if you go to the emergency room, the minimum's a hundred and seventy. And if you have to get an x-ray there, it's two hundred and five. So just for being seen, that's what you're going to get, minimum, every single accident. Um, after that, if you're hospitalized, it's a thousand dollars. Um, if you go straight to the ICU, it's two thousand dollars. Um, if then you are confined to the hospital, they're going to pay two hundred and fifty dollars a day for up to a full year. Again, if you go to the ICU for the first fifteen days, they'll add four hundred dollars a day on top of that two fifty. So it's six fifty a day for the first fifteen days if you're in the ICU. And then it would just scale back to the two fifty after that. Um, they'll pay for things like blood and plasma, major diagnostics, so any kind of CAT scan, CT, EEG, that sort of thing. Um, you get follow-up benefits. It's thirty-five dollars a follow-up and we'll pay for up to six of those. If you need physical therapy, it's again, thirty-five dollars a visit and we'll pay for up to ten of those. Um, appliance benefit, which I got for my boot. Um, it ranges between twenty-five dollars for a cane, up to three hundred dollars for a back brace, um, a knee scooter, a wheelchair, that sort of thing. So the more, I guess, the larger the appliance, the more money you get there. Um, there's a prosthesis benefit, so, you know, if you were to need that sort of thing. Um, as well as a home modification benefit, which they just added. So if you are in a really serious accident and end up in a wheelchair, uh, they're going to give you three thousand dollars to help you modify your home because, you know, your living requirements are going to change. Um, let's see here. Accident-specific some injuries. They will pay for dislocations, burns, any kind of fractures, uh, if you need stitches, um, comas, paralysis, emergency dental work. That all kind of falls under that category. It pays between thirty-five dollars and twelve thousand five hundred depending on how severe your accident was. Um, there is an accidental death benefit that comes along with it. So there's forty thousand dollars worth of built-in life insurance that comes along with it. Um, you know, say an accident did become fatal, that's going to go to whoever you chose as your beneficiary when you sign up for the policy. Um, there's a dismemberment benefit, which Keith just used. Uh, it pays between three hundred and forty thousand. I'm not sure what his pinkie was worth, but, um, I thankfully haven't had to use that one. Um, there's a wellness benefit. So, you know, we want you to check in on your health. If you go for a teeth cleaning, an eye exam, or a physical, they're going to give you back sixty dollars a year just for checking in. And that's whether you filed for any accidents or not. Um, you know, there's an organized sporting activity benefit. I don't know if any of you guys play softball, roller derby, anything like that. If you have children on your policy though, it, it more covers for that. Um, if your kids are in organized sports, uh, whatever we would have paid out for their accident, they'll have an additional twenty-five percent on top of the total, um, just because they were playing in a sporting event. Um, there's a transportation benefit and a family lodging benefit. So if you are in an accident that, you know, takes you to see a specialist, say, in Pittsburgh, uh, anything more than fifty miles from your home will pay cents on the mile to help with like travel expenses, uh, gas, things like that. And then they also pay the family lodging so that a spouse or someone in your family can travel with you and have a hotel to stay in, um, while you're being treated so that you don't have to go by yourself or incur any extra costs, I guess. Uh, they'll pay that family lodging benefit for up to thirty full days. Um, but so that's it for that one. Do you guys have any questions about it? Um, the short-term disability is much shorter explanation-wise. You know, like we already talked about, it basically does the same thing as workman's comp, only it's covering them anytime they're not on the clock. Um, and also if they were to get some kind of sickness. Um, so, you know, the most you can receive in Pennsylvania while you're off work for an injury or illness is sixty-six percent of your, um, your gross income. Uh, so we take whatever they make per year, plug it into the computer. It'll tell us what your maximum benefit is. You can take the maximum or you can take anything below it. You're just not allowed to go higher. Um, you can choose how long you're covered. So three months, six months, twelve months, eighteen, all the way up to twenty-four depending on what the needs are. Um, you can also choose how fast you're covered. Uh, the quickest in PA that you can be covered is the first day if you're in an accident and the eighth day if you're sick. So they're not going to pay if you have like a cold or the flu, something like that. But say you get appendicitis or, you know, pneumonia and you're out for longer than a week, they'll start paying your wages for however long the doctor says you need to stay out of work.
You'll pay the thirty-four percent, right?
Six, or sixty-six percent.
Oh, you pay the sixty-six.
Yes. If that's what they choose as their benefit, we tell them what sixty-six percent is. They can take that. If they don't, you know, everybody's needs are different. Maybe they have a little bit of money saved up. Maybe, you know, I mean, most people live paycheck to paycheck if we're being honest. Um, but if they know they don't need that full benefit, they can knock it down a little bit to what their actual need is, uh, and that's going to drop the price of the policy some. So, you know, that's how we can really make it affordable for anybody who wants it. So that at least you have some coverage and something in place in case something bad happens to you.
And what we've also found out is when people have this plan in place, it actually helps save, uh, in the workman's comp claims and stuff too. Because that way if people, you know, feel that they have some support outside of the work area, like so that their income isn't jeopardized, then it makes it a little bit easier.
They'll try to come to work hurt.
I was going to say, I think the stats are something like eighty, eighty-something percent of workman's comp claims are made mid-day on a, on a Monday morning, like mid-morning. Um, and it's not because people are trying to be dishonest, it's because they're afraid. They know that without a paycheck, they could lose their house. They could lose everything, you know, because people live paycheck to paycheck. So if you have something in place that's covering them on the weekends, you know, they're a lot less likely to, to claim on your workman's comp, which in turn lowers your workman's comp instances and eventually lowers how much you're paying. Okay, so with those two, there's, the second one on the right side, it's, it's this sort of electric blue color.
Left side.
Yes. This one can be added to either accident policies or short-term disabilities. You can't buy it by itself, but you can add it, you know, in addition to either of these two coverages. If you get it on the accident policy, you can cover your whole family with it. If you get it on the short-term policy, it's only for you. Because short-term disability, you can only cover just the W-two employee. The rest of these, if they want to add family members, they can. Um, but this one will pay out five thousand dollars if they have heart attacks, stroke, coma, paralysis, type-one diabetes, traumatic brain injury, advanced Alzheimer's or Parkinson's, ALS, Lou Gehrig's, multiple sclerosis, permanent loss of sight, hearing or speech, or sudden cardiac arrest. So any of those things happen, once you have this in place, the payout's five thousand dollars. If you were to have a secondary occurrence of whatever that is, let's say you had a heart attack and six months later you had a second heart attack, or you were to have something else on that list happen, they will pay twenty-five hundred dollars each time so long as a hundred and eighty days separate the occurrences. Um, they will pay one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for encephalitis, bacterial meningitis, Lyme's disease, which is huge for me because everyone I know is getting Lyme's, getting diagnosed with Lyme's lately. Um, sickle cell anemia, cerebral palsy, necrotizing fasciitis, I don't even know what that is, osteomyelitis, uh, lupus, or cystic fibrosis. Um, they'll pay that same amount for coronary artery bypass graft surgeries. Um, this rider, literally when you, we, if you pick up one of these two policies and you have this rider, it literally adds between three and six dollars a month. I mean, it's incredibly cheap for as much as they pay out if any of those things were to occur. Like I said, for me, just the Lyme's disease alone, knowing I'll get back twelve hundred bucks because my kids, I'm constantly pulling ticks off of them, I know one of us is going to get it. Um, so, uh, that is what that one is. Um, the cancer, this one's my favorite. Not that cancer's my favorite, but this is my, this is definitely my favorite policy. Um, so, um, if you were ever to be diagnosed, initially, uh, the benefit that they pay out is four thousand dollars. Um, that's as soon as you get that diagnosis because they know that you're going to be probably taking some time off, you know, calling doctors, figuring out what you want to do and how you want to treat. Um, so they give you that four grand upfront. After that, it goes by procedure and it covers basically everything you can think of as far as how we fight cancer these days. Um, but it also gives you sort of a choice as to how you want to fight it. Like they're going to pay for all kinds of chemotherapy, radiation, injected, hormonal, non-hormonal, topical. There, there are benefits paid for all of those. Um, but there's also experimental treatments on here. Uh, one of the girls that I work with, her mother actually had cancer, five, or she's been cancer-free for five years now. But when she got diagnosed, she didn't want to do chemo and radiation. She's very, she's sort of a hippie, I guess. But she wanted to do more homeopathic, natural methods and Aflac's the only one that would help her pay for that. They still pay her three hundred dollars a month to pay for the medication that, that got her to where she is now, which is cancer-free for five years. Um, but if you choose to go with, um, you know, more usual methods, they're going to pay for those too. You know, there's stem cell transplants, bone marrow transplants, blood and plasma, um, surgical and anesthesia. There's a skin cancer surgery benefit. Um, you know, as far as hospitalization goes, for the first thirty days, they'll pay two hundred dollars a day. After day thirty-one, it doubles to four hundred dollars a day. Um, if you were to need continuing care, they'll pay for extended care, home health, hospice, nursing, all of those sorts of things. I know that we're surrounded by gentlemen in the room. Oh, not all, not everybody, hi.
I'll talk to you later, I'm interested.
Okay. Um, but there's a reconstructive surgery benefit, which I didn't realize, um, major medical sees as a cosmetic surgery. So say you were to lose a body part to cancer, they will not help you get it back, and we will. Um, same with, you know, if you're of childbearing age and a female, uh, they'll help pay for egg harvesting and storage, um, so that maybe someday you can, if you can't right now. Uh, again, with this one, there's an ambulance benefit, um, a transportation and family lodging benefit, similar to the one that we talked about on the accident policy. Um, there's also a bone marrow donor screening benefit. So if you think someone in your family might be a good fit, we'll help you find out. Um, there is a wellness benefit that comes along with this one too. Every single person on the policy is eligible for that. So instead of just one per policy, it's everyone in your family, if your whole family's covered. Um, it's seventy-five dollars a year. So if anybody goes to get any kind of cancer screening, you get that seventy-five dollars back. Um, the cool thing about this one, especially, I mean, for me anyway, because I have two children, if you purchase this for yourself, your kids are automatically covered up to the age of twenty-six for free. Um, you know, nobody likes to talk about childhood cancer and everybody hopes that that never happens. But if it does, it's, you know, we know that you're going to be off work. You're not going to go to work while your kid's being treated for cancer. So almost all the benefits double if it is a child that's diagnosed. That initial four thousand goes up to eight thousand. Um, you know, a lot of the benefits down here, if it's a child, we pay out a higher price. Um, and you'll also notice that most of the benefits have no lifetime maximum. So say you find out you have cancer, you use the policy, you get all this money back, um, and then you go cancer-free. As long as you keep the policy, if it ever comes back, we're going to start paying all over again.
Or if you develop different types of cancers. We've seen...
Yes.
People that have had two or three different types of cancers and they pay out on each one.
Yeah.
Uh, the other part that's nice about all these policies is that if you buy multiple policies, one doesn't cancel the other one out, they all stack. So if you were hurting in an accident and were off work, for instance, and you had the short-term and the accident policy, those, both those policies would pay out.
Yeah. Any questions on that one? Also, if you have ever had cancer in the past, um, so long as you've been cancer-free for five years, they will let you purchase the policy, which is pretty unusual for a cancer policy. Normally, once you're out, you're out. Um, but if, if anybody has ever been diagnosed, as long as it's been five years, they can still get it. Um, the last one's dental. Um, it works a little differently than the other policies we talked about. You know, these ones, you're buying and hoping not to use. Dental, of course, people buy it because they, they want to go to the dentist. Um, so it's all based on waiting periods. Um, as soon as you pick the policy up, you can go for your preventative, which is, you know, a cleaning and an x-ray. Uh, it'll pay thirty-five dollars for the x-ray, fifty dollars for the cleaning. You can go do that every six months and they'll pay that eighty-five dollars. I know when I go to the dentist, it's about a hundred bucks. I have this policy, you know, Aflac pays about eighty-five of it.
Mine's close to two hundred.
Oh my goodness, for just a cleaning and an x-ray?
Yeah.
Goodness gracious. You ought to find a new dentist. No, I'm just kidding.
A hundred, a hundred, I paid a hundred and seventy-five dollars last time.
Really? I'm sorry.
Well, they give me five percent or ten percent off.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and, you know, I said you have to find a new dentist, but really, my dentist is more expensive than others, but I've been going there since I was a kid and I trust them. And with dental work, I feel like that's important. Um, but yeah, they'll pay that, they'll pay that eighty-five dollars for the wellness, um, every time. Like now, in my case, again, I have two children. If you add one child to the policy, you can have one or you can have ten and it's the same price. So the more kids you have, the more beneficial these things are. Um, because I just took both of mine for a cleaning as well. Um, fillings and basic services, you have a three-month wait on. Uh, so what I normally tell people is as soon as the policy goes into effect, schedule your cleaning and your x-ray. If they tell you you need filling, schedule it three months out. That way you know the policy's going to pay for it. You will see that the, the benefit amount ranges are kind of wide, like... No, it's okay. You'll see they're kind of wide, you know. Actually, do you want me to wait until two thousand? Um...
Hello?
Because apparently if you're getting a filling on this tooth, it's a whole different price than if you're getting a filling on this tooth. That, you know, but it all goes by dental codes. So depending on which tooth you're getting worked on, it pays out a higher amount based on what your dentist charges for that tooth. Um, pain management, again, three months because you're going to want the Novocain if you get a filling. Um, other preventative services, oral surgery, gum treatments and prosthetic repair. There's a six-month wait. Uh, crowns and major services, there's a one-year wait. And then major prosthetics, which, so if you're getting like a brand-new set of teeth, it's a twenty-four-month wait. Once you're past all those waiting periods though, everything's available to you all the time. They just don't want you to pick up the policy, get a brand-new set of teeth and then cancel out next month. Uh, so they make you wait for the big things. Um, but it will pay out sixteen hundred dollars in total per person on the policy per year. So if you're getting something major done and you know you can wait a little while and you, you see, you know, how long you're going to have to wait and schedule it accordingly, you know, you can, it's a pretty good payout for what you pay for the policy. But that's it. That's all I brought in here. Like he said, we do have vision. Um, I don't think we brought the American office there today. The way the vision works, I mean, it's super cut and dried. They help you pay for your glasses or contacts and that's it. And you also get an, an eye appointment once a year. They'll pay forty-five dollars for the eye appointment. Um, and then depending on whether you get, like to get glasses every year, every two years or every three years, they'll pay out different amounts. So if you go, if you like to get them every year, we'll pay eighty-five dollars toward it. If you like to get them every two years, I believe it's one seventy-five. And if you like to get them every three years, it's two eighty, I want to say. Um, so, you know, if you want to get a pair of Ray-Bans, you could do the three-year one and they're going to pay out a lot more for it. But each, the policies all cost the same. So however you want it structured for you, um... So however you want it structured for you, um, but, and I know in people in, I'm gonna say their thirties, it's about three bucks a week normally. Um, a- as you age, uh, it becomes more expensive to pick it up initially, but like we said, once you pick it up, it stays that price forever. So. I think the most I've ever seen it cost was like six dollars or something along those lines, so. That's it.
And of course, if any other questions pop up between the two times, uh, you guys have both our cards. You can feel free to give us a call, drop an email. We'll certainly answer any questions.
Okay.
This is available to employees.
Mm-hmm, any W two workers. Um, if you have any ten, you probably don't have ten ninety nines here, right?
No.
Yeah, any W two workers though. Um, anybody basically who's on payroll.
Cause that lets the three of us out because we're not on payroll. Yeah, yeah, we get W, we, you're right, we're W two.
Yeah, if you get a W two, I mean.
That's right. I forgot, we get it.
Yeah, you, as, as long as you get a W two from them, you would count. So if it's something that you're interested, that's fine too.
Okay.
Yeah, I know that I have some accounts where they, they have a bunch of Aflac and they're almost retired. They just work enough hours a week just to, just to have their deductions taken out and that's it. But one nice thing too is that once you have it, it's yours. So if anybody ever retires, leaves this job, whatever, gets transferred, you can take these policies with you and they stay the same price that you pick them up at. Um, you know, they're, you, you keep that, that payroll rate because you do pay about forty percent less by getting it from an employer than you do if you're just purchasing it yourself. Um, so it's, you know, beneficial to keep it because who knows if your next job is going to offer it, particularly in like short term disability. You know, not everybody offers that to their employees. So if you have it, you can keep it and, and know that you have it for your next job too.
And I have it where I work, but it's not Aflac, so it's nothing that you can take with you.
Right, gotcha.
I guess we'll have to discuss it.
What we do is look this thing over and discuss it the next meeting.
And talk to workers and.
Yeah. Pass it out and see what we can do with it.
Okay. Well, and honestly, I mean, because really, I, you guys wanted to talk about it, obviously, but normally if you go to workers and you're like, hey, do you wanna spend the day talking about insurance? They're like, no, no, I don't. Um, we find that we have, we have a lot better rate of interest. Um, if we're able to show it to them, tell them how much it costs. Because also the other thing is, people think for something like this, you're gonna pay a hundred bucks a month. And you're not. I mean, this honestly, you know, if I buy it, it costs me less than like a sheet's latte per week, which, I mean, I drink a lot of coffee, so. I pay way more in coffee than I do for the, for the policies that I have, you know, but people think it's going to be expensive. Um, so n- normally, if we can get them all together and just take ten minutes, then, and then walk away. And if they're interested, then, then we do it. And if they're not, then, then that's it. Um, but rather than having you guys try to explain to them, you know, what the ins and outs are, and if they have any questions, then you have to call us, that sort of thing. If you, you know, like I said, if you can give us ten minutes with them just to explain it, and then you can talk to them about, you know, if they're interested, then great. And if they're not, then they're not. If that works for you. Well, the only time the guys are here all together is when they take their lunch break, so.
And that's usually, and that time varies because it depends on what they're doing today. Sometimes they don't even come in for lunch.
Sure.
Well, I mean, we can just ask them to be in here some.
Yeah.
Ask them to be here at a certain time.
That depends if they're doing, I mean, like, is the, the, truthfully, the best time to do it would be before they go out of town, because while they're in town.
Six in the morning?
Well, no. Cause while they're in town, it's easier for them to come back, cause they can just leave their car where it sits in the country, you know, or drive one of the trucks back.
Sure.
But when they start going out of town, then it's a little bit harder.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and we're super flexible. I mean, whatever works for you guys the best.
Whatever works for them.
A lot of places they are in township takes them twenty minutes, a half hour to get back.
Sure.
So they'll, they'll be in, they'll probably be going out of town next week, so.
Yeah, that's what, that's what time for me.
Right now the week, so, uh, if you wanted to.
I mean, I can talk to Tom and see what they, I mean, I, if I, if I, if I let him know ahead of time, say, hey, they, is it okay if they come and talk to you at such and such a day at such and such a time, he'll make sure they're here.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, right.
That's not, that's, that's probably actually the easiest thing for, you know, for him to do, because then he can plan ahead.
Sure, yeah.
So.
I mean, if you wanna schedule a time, we can.
I mean, that's great, that'd probably be the easiest thing to do. If you tell me what, what's good for you now, then I could say, hey, Tom, is it okay if they come and talk to you guys?
Sure.
This day, and then he can, he can even.
If he could pick a rainy day.
Yeah, but.
Well, I'll tell you right now, I have next Tuesday and Wednesday open. Um.
Probably the earlier the week, the better, because like as soon as they're done here, they're going out of town, so.
Oh, right, you said midweek.
Yeah.
I have Tuesday, if that.
That'd probably be okay.
If that works.
Yeah, that'd be all right.
What, and you said lunchtime or do you think morning is better?
Well, it doesn't matter. Like I said, if, if he knows you guys are coming, he'll just make sure they're here. That's, you know.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're five minutes from here.
Oh, gotcha, so.
If they know what time you're gonna be here, they can just, they'll just be here. Doesn't.
Gotcha. Um, then whatever time you say.
Oh, gosh, I'm trying to think.
I have that day open, so.
Um, what, how, where are you driving from?
Uh, Brookville. Yeah, it's not too.
What's the date on Tuesday?
Twenty seventh.
Um, let's say ten o'clock.
Perfect.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make sure I'm moving up for Tom.
Um, then.
Do you wanna be here?
Uh, they don't really need to be here.
Okay, the reason I say, we're making a schedule, I, I can't be here till twenty seven.
Yeah, they're just gonna.
Glenn.
I mean, I'd do what they did with us.
Yeah.
That's fine, that's fine.
Speak with them and, and see if they're interested.
That's fine, if they're inter- interested and throw some dollar figures at them.
Yeah. Oh, and speaking of that, so, um, I need to get a little information from you because, you know, each business is rated differently in the insurance world. Do you have the whole thing? The call list? Um, that way I can request, um, request a number. And then in order for me to give them accurate quotes, um, we'll just have to do a phone call when I first get here. So if it's okay with you, I might come.
That's not a problem.
Say like nine thirty.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Can I have a half an hour with you first?
Sure.
Because we'll call in then, it, it'll, they'll talk to me and then they'll talk to you. They'll basically ask us both the, the exact same questions.
Okay.
And then they'll just give us a number for, you know, what your rates are and that sort of thing. So nine thirty.
So we have that, part of it here. What else would we need ahead of time?
This is, um, I can probably fill a part of this from that. Yeah, or we can just go down through it real quick.
Yeah, what I can see right off the bat is, uh.
Do you have their federal ID number?
Federal ID number we would need.
Do you know your federal ID number off hand or do you?
One, four. Um, one, or, I'm sorry, geez, that was really bad, two, five.
You were kinda close.
One, four, two, six, four, two, nine.
Four, two, nine. And we do wanna offer short term disability? I, I guess, I guess.
I think of all of the most.
That's the most important to you?
Well, it's the most lucrative too.
Mm-hmm. Okay, offering disability, yes. Um, now, short term disability is always deducted after tax. It's the only one that's like that, well, short term in life insurance. We deduct that after tax because if they go to use it, the IRS sees it as wages.
Right.
Um, so we don't want them, you know, say, say the maximum they're allowed to get is a thousand dollars a month, just, you know, whatever. We don't want the IRS to then send them a W two saying, we actually want thirty percent of that. We want them to get the full amount. So we tax that as it's going out. That way, if they ever collect, they don't owe anybody anything, it's already been paid.
Well, only that, they're getting back their net in, part of their net income, rather than their gross income.
Sure, yeah. Um, and so as for right now, we're gonna say no, that you guys are not paying for any ter- any part of the short term disability. Now, in the future, if, you know, if things changed and you wanted to, we can always make a switch, but for now, we'll say.
That'll be brought up, that could be brought up at a budget meeting.
Sure, yeah. Um, are you guys FICA exempt by any chance?
Yes.
Yes? Wow, no one's ever answered yes to that question for me before. Um, is anyone that works here eligible for the railroad tax exemption? Okay. And so, let me think here. Do you, do you want to start the paperwork to be able to deduct this pre-tax? Or, so here, here are the pros and cons. If you're doing it post-tax, the guys can pick up plans and drop them whenever they want. If you do a pre-tax plan, you get to, you know, everybody saves a little bit of money, but that does mean that they have one month out of the year when they can make changes, pick things up, drop things, that sort of thing. You know, usually, you know, unless you really know you wanna do it, usually I tell people, if you want for the first year, you can do it after tax, just to see how the program works with your employees, how happy they are with it. Because then if somebody decides they don't wanna take part, they can opt out. Um, you know, if you do, if you're doing it pre-tax, they can't opt out until this time next year. Um, and then if, if everything goes well, if everyone's really happy, next year we can switch it over to pre-tax. And then you'll know, you know, you've kinda had a trial run, I guess. Um, that's up to you, whichever you prefer is.
Probably be a better way to go.
What, post-tax?
Uh, run a trial run for the year.
For the year and then revisit it next year?
Yeah.
Okay. Put in your start date, are you happy with eight, one?
Yeah, that would work.
Okay, so if anybody wanted policies, um, is it okay with everyone if we do an eight, one start date? That gives us about a month and a week to make sure everything goes as planned and you, you know, with payroll and things like that.
It gives you enough time to put it on the system, doesn't it?
Um, and normally, okay, they ask what kind of products you'll be offering. I normally just write down everything that we have because that way, if you decide you wanna add something later that maybe you're not doing right now, it's not gonna, then we don't have to redo any kind of paperwork. You don't have a broker, do you?
No.
Name and title of the account contact.
That'd be Christie.
Is it a C?
C-H-R-I-S-T-Y. Regal, R-E-I-G-E-L. Secretary Treasurer.
See if there's anything else here. Contact email.
H-T-W-P at Comcast dot net.
The company's legal name?
Highland Township.
Street address, is that?
Three sixty-three Pennsylvania Avenue.
Hmm, is this considered, we're not in Kane yet, right?
No.
City is?
James City.
James City, yeah, okay. And zip code, actually, I think, one, six, seven, three, four?
Yep.
Um, and then the billing address, is it the same or different?
Uh, post office box five oh five.
Um, the phone number, eight, one, four, eight, three, seven, two, two, six, one?
Eight, seven, six, two. That's Aflac, so.
Oh, eight, one, four, oh, I see, eight, seven, six, two, okay. Three, seven, eight, seven, six, two. Number of W two employees.
Six, seven, eight, eleven.
Is that counting you guys as well? Any, and no ten ninety nines. Um, and then would you want to remit the bill monthly?
Yes.
Um, are you, how often do you pay? Are you weekly?
Biweekly.
Is it a twenty six biweekly? Like twenty six pays per year?
Yes.
Okay. Um, what would the date of the first deduction after eight, one be? So what's your first payday after eight, one?
It'll be the time.
So eight, ten. One. Um, and then the invoices are already, always due on the fifteenth at the Montreux.
Okay.
Um, we do bill in arrears, so, you know, their policies start eight, one. They'll be covered for that full month and you don't get billed until nine, one, ten.
Okay.
Um, that way, if anybody ever leaves the company, they can't come back to you and say, you owe me for my Aflac.
Right.
Um, they actually haven't been billed yet. So that makes it less of a headache for you if you have any kind of turnover. Is there a third party that collects or remits any of?
No.
Uh, and this is an S corp, C corp partnership, sole proprietor, other?
Other.
Other, what is that?
Uh, local government.
Um, if you were to hire anybody new, um, when would you want them to be eligible for, for these products? Um, usually, we kinda stick with however you cover them with your major medical. So if that's thirty, sixty, ninety days, we just kinda keep it the same and that way all of your things flow together.
Well, uh, cause you, cause we usually offer till full time, but it would be, usually, usually give it to as soon as they start. So it's usually immediately after they start.
Okay. Okay, and then that's all I need for this. Like I said, I'll, I'll call in and get a, get a request number. And then when I see you at nine thirty on the twenty seventh, we'll make that phone call and it usually takes like ten, fifteen minutes.
That sounds good.
In the meantime, like he said, if you guys have any questions or, you know, anything else, please let us know.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, do you want me to offer them that, um, that seventy five hundred in accidental death and dismemberment? It's free. You can do it if you want. Yeah, their, their only requirement is that we see eighty percent of your, of your eleven employees. So as long as we get to talk to everyone, they don't have to take part in, in the program.
Mm-hmm.
They just have to, you know, just have to talk to us. Um, but they're not obligated to buy anything, but they can still have that seventy five hundred. Even if they don't, we just have to sign, you know, put in some information for them on it.
Okay, yeah, that would be good.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
Good.
All right, well, that's yours. I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, yeah, I keep track of it in one spot.
Well, I'm always asking you questions while we drive too and you wanna talk.
Did you wanna let that June say?
That is exactly what I meant to do. That's why I had that weird look on my face. I'm glad you were watching. Okay, all right, well then, if you don't have anything else, we'll let you go about your day.
Okay, yeah, after we get this all done, we'll bring us up at the meeting.
Perfect, yeah. Yeah, and if anything changes, just let me know, otherwise, we'll be here on the twenty seventh. And now, if anybody's interested in signing up, are, do, is it okay if they sign up that day?
I have no problem with it.
Okay. Okay, perfect. All right, well, thank you for coming and meeting with us again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you say you wanted to talk about something?
Yeah, the short game.
Oh, great.
A couple of questions, sure. Now, does it have a food company or anything?
It depends on what you're looking for, what family. Um, you, you can get it outside of company?
You know. You know.
Okay, yeah, we do a lot of daycares, actually. If you wanna give me, um, the number for her daycare, I can talk. Sure, well, I, well, okay, are they like friends of yours? Okay, okay, yeah, cause I was gonna say, I mean. How, how many influence can they have?
Probably at least have ten or more, I really don't know.
We have Max DeFras cancer policy, is that correct? You don't probably have any of those with you, do you? Um, so there is a cancer policy that you can get, it's not exactly the same as the one we're running over here, it's a little bit different.
Sue caught a double the other day.
So there's that one.
Last week.
An accident policy, uh, you can get life insurance. Um, trying to think what else, dental, vision.
We've got ten of them, been into the, been around the house, she goes on trail camps. Ten different bears went back. Wait till they got darn corn starts coming up and the wheat starts getting tops on them.
I'm sure I have some here too.
Old Roy still will be out there with that.
We, we've actually oddly been in this area awful long lately, so.
Every one of them in a day.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and if you have.
Right in the daytime. I've one, one feeder lasts four hours, I hung it up at noon, that's our weight. Hung it up at noon, I was out working on the back, doing some stuff in the back lawn, working around. It started raining, I walked in the house, put my tools away, went in, got a cup of coffee, looked out and the feeder was gone.
Paying a couple dollars extra is worth it to them, but. Well, and it's funny, Aflac used to be structured like that, like I said, when my dad started. He said the guy that was training and dropped him off on the street, and he said it was middle of winter and there was a foot of snow, and he said, I'll be back at five. So that's how we used to do it.
Got a hundred and fifty-some thousand miles on it. Mine's, mine's, I think, I see this today or tomorrow, the way to Charlotte to pick up glass, I got Ron's truck into the garage. He's got trouble with it. So they gave you that thing to drive.
Well, that's, that's good, most people. Well, like you said, you've had it for a lot of years, most people buy it and just kinda forget about it. That's the thing, I've had a lot of people forget that they have these policies and then we can go back. That's one good thing about us is, as long as you own the policy, we can go back, so if you had an accident ten years ago.
That sounded to me like it would've been a pretty good. Yeah, I mean, it's just, when I talked to Jim about it, you know, I just. Almost two years ago now, he was explaining some of that to me. And then I went back and he explained a little more of some of the things and he asked about dumping pure water. I got in trouble with pure water.
I always feel it doesn't hurt the job.
No, absolutely.
As far as I'm concerned, it was potable, dump it in the damn stream.
Thank you very much.
No problem. I told my boyfriend when I got home. They're terrible, and my foot is so hot all the time with this heat, oh man.
It's too much money.
I'm in pain all the time, but I can't handle the extra pain.
Right, well, and I'm not sure that this is getting any better, I had two doctors tell me it was broken and then I had two tell me that it was just a sprain.
Where'd you go?
Initially, I went to Brookville Hospital, which doesn't have the best reputation. Um, but it's close to my house and it was ten o'clock at night, so.
Yeah, you go to Pittsburgh area, cause they're all around here, you tell me it is fine.
Yeah, and then you found out it was broke.
I had this second fusion, the United States kind of had.
Really?
It always been pain, I shouldn't walk, I shouldn't, I shouldn't, supposed to be in wheelchair, but. No, and, and I hurt all the time, but the more I do, I hurt, but then if I suddenly do nothing, I hurt too.
It hurts too, yeah.
So you might as well do something.
Well, I know with this, I've had it on for more than a month now and I don't think it's getting better, I feel like it's getting worse. And that's what I worry about, is that once it's missed, then you have to re-break it or something. Oh, my goodness.
So they fused it and I had always frame work around it and everything, and then it's you're gonna be paying the rest of your life some days or so, but you shouldn't, shouldn't be on it.
Well, that's what they told me, they're like, oh, we can tell you, you need to keep it up and you need to ice it, stay off of it, I'm like, I have two kids and I work. I can just sit down with my foot up all night, you know? I try to ice it every night before I go to bed, but.
No more than you have to.
And a lot of people say that, yeah.
I probably lost my leg for a while. Well, then, infection and all that stuff. I still, they wanna do surgery on it again, but I'm not too thrilled. And I hurt my back and they want to do that, I'm saying, I don't think so.
And that's what I'm finding is I'm, I'm like out of line and so then other parts of me are starting to get sore, like a shoulder or a hip or something like that, and I know it's because I'm
I really suggest it because. I'm lucky I found the guy I did, that did the surgery, I was like, really?
Hey, Marcia, can we get the meeting on, we gotta finish the meeting.
Have a good day, gentlemen. See you later.
Okay, I'd like to open the meeting to public comment.
I'd like to comment on that young fella you got mowing, what a fine job he's doing. I see he was down there mowing by the house and, uh, with that tractor, and I see he's picking up debris and all that stuff. Wasn't there a bucket for the front of that tractor that he could, you know, put on, save some trips and? I asked Theory about it and he said to his knowledge, he hasn't seen one. So I stopped in, bought a car, I asked Christie about something there, about the bucket, and I bought a copy off of her. That says that they did receive when they bought the tractor. I'd like to have that back too, by the way. When you look at it and see, if you can find it and put it on for the gentleman, I'm sure it would help.
Yeah, yeah, it can.
Says there in your bucket. I don't know where it is, I've never seen one.
I've never seen one on it.
I would think so, I can, I can look and see if I can find some paperwork, I don't, I, I have no idea. Those six, that's way before me, so I have to look back and see if I can find anything on it.
Worst case, we can look through the minutes.
Okay, Bob?
Yeah, I wanna comment, I think, I wanted you to tell the road crew with all this heavy rain and stuff, we got, uh, the berm and they did on the shoulders really made a big difference. My house is one of the only places left with a ditch, and I can tell you, that ditch hardly ever ran any water, now, even in the spring when you had, you know, runoff and stuff, nothing ever hit that ditch, and now, there's actually stuff, I mean, really running through there. I mean, it's never done that since they filled in the stinking ditch.
No, like, like I saw Tom yesterday, the other day, I said, I used to walk to work before, and my feet would be soaking wet just because the water, so much water rose. And now, every day's been raining, it's not, never happened once, since I've done that.
They made it down my way too this morning, they did a fine job.
Yep.
Well, I have a problem with the grating all through town, everybody's witching and complaining about it and there's the water still runs down into my driveway bad and then down by Robbie's, it's flooding, it's running into, not running into the great drains and then it's going into the overflow in the sewer system, I think. And other people are saying it's running into, down their steps, it's running into. And then runs into riches and then runs into mine, and that's not the road. That part isn't, but a, a lot of people are upset about, and they complain, and I talent to come to the meetings.
But the thing that you have to realize here is, you can, you can dig something to divert the water out of your yard. But the, the longer that water lays in our roads, the worse the roads are gonna get, they're gonna have to raise taxes to replace all these roads in this township. Just, I would, I would rather have some water in my yard that I have to worry about getting rid of, than have to have my taxes raised because we have to pay to get new roads in, in the township, that's the way I look at it.
And people are complaining about the big grooves where the grater didn't have everything taken off and there's big marks all over the pavement. Where it's dug into the pavement.
The other thing is, if that water runs across the road, I asked Tommy and Billy to get together and see what they can do to fix up that driveway and cut that water off in there. So they're supposed to get together, I talked to both of them on that, to get together, whatever he's gonna do with that driveway and stop that, that runs across right in front of your house too, doesn't it, it's a sign, or is it going down to Robbie's place?
If Rob gets flooded, sometimes it's right, you know.
I've asked them to look at it and see what they can do about it.
We've asked, I've asked many times, he did fix it at one point, but then now it's not fixed.
Billy and I went to the meeting the other night, I asked him about it. And I asked Tommy to get, both of them get together and see if they, see what they can do to leave that, relieve that water running across there.
Whose, whose driveway?
Billy Edinger's.
He's getting water in his driveway too?
No, he's not getting water, the water's running across the road before it gets to his driveway.
Yeah, so that's the same problem that John and Diane Hillier have had for the last five years too. I mean, if you're gonna look at that, we need to send somebody to at least, every, every winter when we have snow melt and stuff, they have to call in, I like to come fix their furnace again because it floods our basement so bad.
My basement gets full when it runs across and down my driveway and my garage and front yard.
Everybody's does.
Tommy? Okay, we'll move on to new business.
I, I do, uh, it's kinda old new, but, uh. This probably should've been done a year ago when I became the supervisor, it's smart to have, every supervisor should request it. But I'm sick and tired of hearing our sec- secretary get blamed for the ninety-six thousand dollars. I'm, I'm tired of it, it just keeps happening, nobody will let it go, so I make a motion that we have a forensic audit done on the township. They'll alleviate it all, proof will be there. I'm sick and tired of the accusations in this township. That's what I think needs to be done.
People are saying she's stealing?
It's her fault.
I haven't heard nothing about it, that's, it's, it's news to me, that's why I'm.
I did.
Jackie Vaughn was saying at the end of our last public meeting, if you watch the video and stuff, Jackie was saying it, Jackie and Matt Vaughn.
Jackie and Matt both said it, I've had enough of it.
Ninety-six thousand?
So I, I, I make motion, we have a forensic audit done.
How come just a plain audit that you're, you guys are audited? There should be proof enough.
Apparently it isn't. Cause it keeps coming and keeps coming and keeps coming. So this will straighten it out, there'll be an outside auditor taking care of it and that'll be the proof. Apparently, nobody believes anybody, so.
I haven't heard it. No one's asked me about it.
That's all I have.
I mean, after, you know, Mike brought this up, I guess the way I, I look at it is, if there was nothing done wrong, then nobody has anything to worry about.
What's he gonna audit, everything, fire department, recreation, all this, or just?
Uh, yeah, probably, whole township.
I don't know, I don't know what we would be allowed to audit, I'd have to ask the solicitor, who would be, I don't know, how far they can go with that.
Basically, well, um, you can contact the solicitor and, uh, he can get rolling on it, I guess.
So you're willing to pay again for the fire department, didn't they just pay someone to audit them too?
No, they do their own audit, it's in-house audit.
The only audit they get is the fireman's relief audit, as far as I know, and that's, that's.
That's the fireman's relief fund, they audit them every three years or five years.
Yep, they do that every two years, their fireman's relief is audited, because they, cause every, all the other money they get is donations, and so that technically. I mean, I mean, they keep pretty good books too, so.
Not saying it's gonna happen, but it.
No, I, I just, I didn't know they just did their own stuff.
I'm mainly concerned with the township.
Yeah, I.
I'm gonna get to the bottom of this, so the record will be straight and clear. That's all I have.
Well, you made the motion, I second the motion, Jim, your vote.
Do what you gotta do.
So what's a special meeting Friday about? At ten o'clock Friday, there's supposed to be a special meeting here?
Not that I know of.
No.
It's in the newspaper.
Newspaper.
God, did they print it wrong? I didn't look at it, oh, jeez.
Well, it's in the newspaper, cause people are calling and asking me, I don't know.
I didn't see the ad, cause I put the ad in.
Come to today's meeting then.
I put the ad.
This was in the last meeting, that.
Was it, was this one advertised right?
Was this one advertised?
Yes.
Oh, well, then I don't know who put that one, now you should, was it Highland Township?
Yes.
Yes.
I didn't put that advertisement in, I have no idea what that is.
Straighten out, we're not paying for that.
I'm just asking, cause I.
There is no meeting scheduled for Friday.
I have no idea what that is.
Which paper was that in, Marcia?
Kane paper?
Kane paper.
No, no, I mean, which day?
Yesterday.
Oh, see, I don't get the paper usually, so I have to see.
I have no idea.
But someone called and asked me and I said, I don't know.
All business. I have nothing, Joe. Okay, I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it. I'm worried, do we, we don't have no checks to sign.
No, oh, yeah, I do, I have a couple, just, just for the reason that they're.
She always got checks to sign, that's why I ask.
Before the end of the month here.
So they only, they don't actually have to do those?
No, but these are just because I have.
When's payday, next Thursday?
Next Thursday, yeah.
Next Thursday, we should stop by and make sure the checks are signed.
Because I don't, yeah, these have to be due for the end.
No, I.
Usually about twenty after one.
Yeah, okay.
If you would just to get a hold of the hand paper and ask them to print the extraction on that.
Well, let me look at the ad first, just to make sure what it says, and I'll, and I'll get a hold of her, I'll, I'll look at the ad first, see what it says. Because the only thing that I, cause I put in for this one last week, and she even emailed me back and said, you know, it's gonna be in Saturday's paper and it's gonna cost you this much money, that's the last I heard from her. So with that other one that's from, I have no idea.
You know, speaking of the water, I remember when Joe dug that foundation for that house, and he, he almost, he had a good lake in there. And the present residents still got water.
Oh, yeah.
The edge of the foundation end outside, and it runs right down towards their house. It's gotta be right along that area, it's gotta be in a hell of an underground stream, and you're, and you're somewhat of an angle down there, probably runs right down, that underground stream comes right down through there.
Like I said, I have, I've never had water in my backyard, and there's a spring that come up in my backyard and it's ran constantly. And nobody's come looking for a water leak, so. And nobody's come looking for a water leak, so I don't know if it's a water leak, and I mean, it's a hundred feet off the road.
I heard somebody say there's still a water leak in town. I heard that.
I, I find it hard to believe, I mean, normally a water leak will travel along the pipe and come up somewhere.
Usually on a ditch line, you'll see it in a ditch line somewhere.
I mean, this is a hundred feet away from the, the water line, I, I can't believe it would be.
You have no utility lines coming down to there.
I've never had a wet faucet myself at all.
It's just enough, it's still wet enough that it could create a wet spring.